Yep.
But what? You're going to want to. So small, so much.
Organizing, starting.
And everything over. Me. It's like. I actually get your children up here. So. They were something bad at the meetings.
Right.
I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay, everyone, this is the regular business hearing with the county board of supervisors. Please join me in a brief moment of silence before we pledge allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the law. We got a study. One hundred and eighty-five hundred dollars. And it's just one. Thank you very much. Members President with myself, Chair David Pride, Vice Chair Robert Bubenheim, Superintendent Michael Alvera, Slitherland Karasak, and Gia John Presley, Town Manager Julie Heiliger. Before the seating meeting, we had a standing effective assessment from five thirty PM through approximately six PM for Jordan's litigation, in particular the back nine matter. And I'm also reminding everyone of our trunk rigging fall fest, how the February twenty-sixth, you can learn more on our website. And also to save everyone future confusion, on your copy of the agenda, on the back, on the bottom, with upcoming township meetings, but not always going to get confused from here on out. We have.
I'm just going to say enough to care, then who bought the hot dog for the truck?
Brown pot and hot dogs. If you're interested in buying other foods, such as the fun, let us know. All right. We have the minutes of August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting, do I hear motion?
Motion.
My Mr. Love and I'm going to hear a second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Alvera, any questions?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Aye. We have ratification of bills of August twenty-fifth in the amount of forty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and seven cents, forty-six thousand. Four hundred and ten. This from the general fund, S R fund. Take that to type over forty-sixty dollars. And we have today's in the amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars ninety-one cents, of which the general fund is a hundred thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars eighty-eight cents, liquid fuels fund is forty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and three cents, and the capital improvement brand fund is nine thousand five hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Love and I'm doing here a second.
I will second.
Second, Mr. Alvera, any questions?
Okay, what's the? Mid-Atlantic marketing. Marketing, Mid-Atlantic marketing, oh, is that paying for the road?
Yes.
Or is that all the?
How much road can we pay with that? You know, or is that like a one?
Should our share? This is, this is part of the target, right?
That was.
Pretty sure.
That's our contribution for the county one.
Correct.
Cheers.
Houses and try to keep in mind, last time, or a few years ago, some issues with the previous one. Anything else? All in favor? Aye. It's listed reports.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last month has been taking up very quickly with the various lawsuits that are pending, or I have them, if you speak, two involving Mount Manor, two involving Ms. Carroll and one involving Michael Ellis. But I've been working on those items, there's been oral argument in some cases, there was an injunction very long now, I can't remember on Friday. And you're briefing that is due, in fact, I was working on a brief today, and this Carroll case, which was due by the end of the week on early, and this appeal. And I also worked on preparing the complaint in the yellows matter that has to be filed as record this week. And I believe that's under the agenda. And then in addition to that work, I did a little work with respect to preparing the advertising notices and related items with respect to the Ben and directed zoning amendment. And then other than the normal emails and or other matters, that's pretty much what I've been doing this past month.
Excellent. Do you want to just give a quick update on the status of that preliminary injunction?
Well, we had the hearing, we, we had filed a, a request for an injunction because residents were concerned that the fitness and this noise of continuing in a R dash one low-density residential zoning district without any abatement. Or authorize me to file a complaint in county court for injunction, which I did. And I also then filed a motion for preliminary injunction. To at least preliminarily have this used abated while the case was pending, because then there will be a determination as to whether or not the injunction will become permanent, unless the case could get resolved in some other fashion. So that hearing was held on Friday at Monroe County Court before the Honorable Judge Lewis. There were two or I believe four individuals testified on behalf of the township. In addition to Supervisor Bubenheim. And after that hearing was held, the court entered the injunction. The applicant attorney asked, well, does the injunction also apply to the children of the owner? Who could be using their motorcycles around their own property, et cetera? And surprisingly, the judge said yes, applies to them. So that's, here we are, there probably discovery and other things that will be continuing, again, unless we can somehow resolve the matter.
Excellent. Real quick, just in, in the event that someone with a breach said, or who is the appropriate authority to call in that case?
Well, there really is no appropriate authority in sense that it is now a violation of a court order. And so the judge would be the authority, but you would call the judge, what you would do is you would call someone in the township who can go out and confirm that the violation has occurred. And then you would directly to file a petition for contempt. Hold that person in contempt, and then the judge will schedule a hearing. And then there will be a hearing, and again, the person who confirmed the violation would have to come and testify on behalf of the township, et cetera, so that's how that will work.
Great. Thank you. Tom, who proceeds to you?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been pretty busy. I have some good news, we are getting our EMS approval for revision trail by the end of the week.
Great.
Which means we can discuss bidding dates and. Now, now the big task is waterfront park.
Right. Great.
So that, that was due to do is, you know. Wawa started construction down the gateway. I attended a meeting down at the intersection of Gap Bee Drive and two oh nine, developers looking to redevelop that existing property, and there's some discussions on that.
Yes, please.
We got three new plans in that we're in the process of reviewing, and one is a full land development submission for water gas wellness, they're proposing eight thousand square acre recreation center. Got a sketch plan in for sheets down at two oh nine and four forty-seven.
Directly.
And then we got a small anti-bombing plan in for goes up Widener, which is over on Joel Street off of Business two oh nine. And of course, we're still, we've kicked off our meeting for the bike park master plan, and that will be an ongoing process within the next couple of months.
What's the, the Joel Street later about?
He wants to build, I haven't looked at it that closely, we're just preparing an acceptance review, but I think he wants to put in a garage for his business.
Oh, is this the gentleman with the tree service?
Might be.
Somewhere.
So that's all I have, unless there's questions.
All right then.
What? I'm just, yeah. Just on process, so, um. You know, I haven't seen any of these plans, which I shouldn't be seeing. You review them for completeness, is that right? And then and then doesn't necessarily give us first, right, might go to planning commission or whatever.
Goes to planning commission. And that really starts the plot around a day clock.
Planning starts, okay.
Only, only once in a blue moon will we get a sketch plan, but they don't talk to us.
Yeah, that's what they ask.
And if they can legally, we don't have to question it. It's, it's informed.
Yeah.
What?
I just have a question, you talked about this four forty-seven, two oh nine, the sheets. When you have the Wawa on the other end of the block, building construction?
Correct.
Now you're gonna let a sheet go up on that side?
There's no such thing as let, we don't, we don't get to decide what, what is or what isn't. It's a permitted commercial use in that district.
I know it's not part of the gateway, it's something separate, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so they're two different entities.
Correct, two different entities, and they're, they're going to need, you know, work to get a highway occupancy permit and all that before they proceed to land.
This, this, oh, of preliminary, or did, did you?
They did a sketch plan.
I saw one with planning commission, yes, and I know at the time, there was a lot of I remember I stated concerns that they would never get approval from Penda to do it, but I don't know, they probably weren't working on it, so.
Well, John, and I see, and I think some other folks from Penda, they went to the scope meeting for the previous version, right, so there's probably some half, but I haven't seen this new one yet.
Yeah, no, totally the sketch plan, it actually, it was a plan, an H O P was submitted to Penda. And Penda said that they would not act on it without township input, so that resulted in a meeting here at the township. We offered comments, Penda had their own comments, and I don't know to what extent those comments helped them address some sketch plans, because I haven't had a chance to review it just yet, but it's been probably at least six months since our initial meeting, so they've had plenty of time to try to address some issues if they were going to try to address them.
But I know we would, oh, I know, I would love to chat with Jim, who's here right now, and I told Jim that as well, I think you were all trying to have conversations, because of course it makes sense if there's going to be a thing up in my corner, that there would be some.
I think, John, I think John spoke with them, if I'm not mistaken. Are they using T P D?
They're using T P D for their traffic engineer, and they're using for their support design.
All right. Thanks, thank you, John, Chris. Oh, I got.
Is there anything you could like share about the Gap Bee Drive development?
They have an existing approved land development plan that was approved back in two thousand and fourteen, now. That plan is going beyond five years, so it it has expired with respect to the township. At the same time, back in two thousand and fourteen, they did get an M P D S permit, and they've kept that alive. So what they're trying to do, and I don't know what's planned for the development, but it's, it appears to be one building. Merchant. Uh. But they and it's a very small thing, so and the environmental constraints have gotten more strict in the intervening time. So they want to keep their M P D S permit alive. So they can't alter the plan too much, or it means they've got a new M P D S permit, so they're, they're trying to work with that, but at the same time, they recognize that the intersection is problematic for everybody, and we're trying to work out a solution. Where perhaps that intersection could be realigned or made better, so a lot of discussion. But there's also constraints on there.
And do they have an existing H O P?
They had submitted for an existing H O P and went through several cycles, but the, the final permit was never issued.
Correct.
What is an H O P?
Highway occupancy permit.
Like Penda.
Permission from Penda to be able to access the property.
And, and you need to, before you do that, you do your scoping application meeting, so that'll still have to happen then.
I, no, no, I mean, they are trying, just like the M P D S permit, they are trying to finalize comments from years ago.
Okay.
On the H O P application.
The, the advantage of this for us is that if it happened, we have the intersection of Gap Bee Drive, the line with, so that you have a light there and be able to get out right in spirit.
That'd be great.
Mom, is, is you?
Well, were there any more questions on that? I have something new.
Is it, is it on that, or?
So, well, while we're getting into it from John and Ron over there, Ron and John. So speaking of H O Ps, I'm wondering, do we know if Ted has an H O P? And the, I missed the last meeting because I got caught by the change, so I appreciate that you put this on the agenda, I think that's a great idea, but, so I'm wondering, I heard that he may have an approved Meltzer's agreement plan, is it signed by the township? He's admitted it. Where do you stand with that?
I don't think he has approved developer's agreement, we
That for sure, he does not have.
We completed our review of his site where cost estimate would become part of the developer's agreement, and we recommended increases to that estimate, and that is basically back to him for his review when it turns or whatever, so thus that's where I know.
So you haven't gotten to the point of checking the H O P yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
By the time that, that agreement eventually have to be voted upon, if I'm not mistaken, to enter into, so that'll be on the agenda when that's ready, but based on the last few emails, there's really well, there's a little bit of ways to go on his end before.
I have reviewed the changes that he proposed to the agreement, right? I had some concern about the changes, that they may not be what was originally proposed, he sent an email back saying you're completely wrong, there is absolutely no change to the two thousand and five plan, other than instead of doing it in four phases, we're doing it in eleven phases. So that's where it stood, he called me last week to further discuss that, but with the other things on my plate dealing with his township, I will not able to return that call, but that development agreement is ready to go pretty much. So I mean that he is in agreement with any final changes that I have proposed.
Do you have like all those road things on the O five plan, the road, the findings of fact, all those road intersections that need to be complied with? That's a lot of expense on the road improvements. Intersection.
Anything that's in the original approval is still asking it completed, right?
Findings of fact, yeah, there's a whole page on.
Yes.
Now, when do, does anybody get to see the developer's agreement before you guys vote on it, you three?
I mean, as soon as we know that it's going to be voted upon.
We should be able to review it, right?
Particularly those that have the, the status, yeah. Not the standard with every, but it's.
And then does he have to have the H O P before you can sign that?
No.
Oh, third. You said it's last time.
And then he's changing it from four to eleven, when two of them already gone to the park service?
I don't, I don't think it's.
In this section?
I don't think he's talking about like, like
One B.
Eleven additional, but I think it's like eleven phases within.
Eleven within one B?
Yes, yeah.
It'll be eleven phases, I don't think it's thirty years.
Isn't that only?
I don't, I think.
You should be happy about that.
I think it's likely to never happen.
But it, it should never happen, it's way too old, you guys gotta really.
It, look, if you can find a judge that says that, great, but none of them said that so far, so we have to we're being proud of just as much.
Aren't the eleven stages just for the first thing they're building?
Yes.
But if they have no access to follow roads, you can't.
Yes, if, if like the eleven were this.
Not at this point, they're, they're clearly agreeing that they do, but that's not what they're going to build then, if they ever build.
I asked this question on this, and my understanding is that he has rights on Charm Valley Road that will pass, so technically when he bought the property, there was that was my understanding.
There's easements.
There's easements, I know, but there's easements on Shawnee Valley Drive, and so it's a that's something that H O A is going to have to deal with, but he owns those rights.
Section one.
But technically, he could do a little phase, as I understand it, and build it out of Shawnee Valley, and if it doesn't do well, does do it, he'll never be remiss. I don't know. That's technically possible, right?
That's your interpretation, and then.
And if they want big.
It's after phase one.
If they, and if they want to make these, if they want the township considered dedication of the, the improvements, then they're gonna have to be, you know, they'll be bonded and respected the same way we're talking about all future others, so.
Is that why something like the speed bumps in Shawnee Valley that
Was here.
You're trying to eliminate so that can become a township road, so then they can have that?
We don't necessarily want to eliminate uh, good speed bumps, we want to eliminate speed bumps that are causing issues with emergency response, and there's different types of traffic calming devices that aren't going to cause someone in the back of Debbie's ambulance to fly off the gurney, right?
It's feeling.
Yeah.
By the way, those, those bad speed bump, they're taken out.
Okay, go ahead, and then we're gonna move on.
Yeah, I just want to ask quickly, do the sketches show what buildings are going to be on there?
Oh, yeah, that's all still online, too, by the way. On the open development, on the open developer projects page, there's a lot of PDFs, but it's there.
All approved for these three people are, you're about gonna be, reminder.
And almost all the last three. Okay, Julia, anything that you want to know?
Uh, no, I've got more.
Excellent. Supervisors comments, Robert, I go anything?
I, I gotta say, we continue to, are we talking about the signage there?
Oh, you, you can go ahead and talk about that now, that's fine.
I mean, we've been continuing to meet on weekly basis, our signage committee to update the signage. Or interest should write a whole new chapter on signage, and we basically had our last meeting this morning. The goal is to clean it up a little bit, there's still some comments, some track changes and stuff, and are hoping that this body will form a, a meeting, obviously. Or what's it called?
A joint session.
A joint session between the planning commission and the supervisors to review it before it formally goes to anybody else.
Awesome. Looking forward to that, that real yeoman's work, so.
It's been months, but
Yeah.
And it's not, still not perfect in my view, but it's good.
Yeah, great. Awesome. Thanks, Senator Old Business, we had considered request planning commission to use the draft lighting ordinance, but as indicated, there's still a little bit of work to do before he wants to take this step. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to table item A under Old Business. Do I see your motion?
So moved.
Looking at Mr. Alvera.
Second.
Second, Mr. Love and I, any question? All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Okay, the new business consent agenda, which authorizes the complaints and civil enforcement in Reed Smithfield Township, being Michael Ellis. And so, yeah, that's it. Do I hear a motion on that?
Black.
Mister Love and I, and second, second, Mr. Alvera, any question? All in favor?
All right.
As short as my head, okay, we had a discussion, Goodfield Gateway Status update, we have Jim Patrice here and Doug Olmstead, whoever would like to take today's first. Ready?
Aye. Low favor.
Actually, we have a recycling bin in here. Well, don't worry, we're, we're writing, I know things in the sand, although that means you have to give us a laugh.
Are we?
Yes.
Haven't been here in a while. And we want to update you, but it's been a bit coming on. Some good, some not so good, but, um. So what failed this project to get developed over twenty-five years is the roads. Um. We tackled them. Um. We got far enough that we were able to do some of the development, and then you look at exhibit A. Okay. Exhibit A, verse one. Uh, this projects what we're able to develop right now with Penda. Um. It's, it's really the Wawa. Uh, the pad next to Wawa, pad behind St. Loops. Pad next to St. Loops, and then across the way, next to the dairy, the name would be a bike one. So this, what you're seeing here is approved, you have
Yeah, yeah.
Some things working on it. Uh, but it's only about fifteen of the hundred and twenty acres that we own. And we have a significant amount of debt on this parcel. Our lenders have been working with us. And I could, they realized that we're the most well by to get this happening, um. Now we go to the next thing, exhibit B. And this is all based on Langin traffic counts. And this is all based on Langen traffic counts. What you're looking there, exhibit B, is what development we can get done with the remainder of two oh nine being completed. Uh, as you know, we've completed, although we had problems with that completion, which we'll talk about in a minute. Um, but, um, this plan with improving the western side of two oh nine. Uh, we can develop these properties, which for the most part is the, I guess you would call it, the key residential development of of it. Um, and we've been working very closely. Rosemary Brown has been an amazing advocate for us. Um, but we got last week some stunning bad news. That Gateway did not make the multimodal grant request. Um, I had an extensive conversation with Rosemary yesterday. She decided herself, she really couldn't pin it down as to what happened. Because we were counting on that western side of two oh nine being completed, which would allow us to do ages two A, one B, two B. Um, a a sizable bulk of the property. Um, so it was really discouraging, um, still trying to pick up the pieces as to what happened. Um, but it's shocking that Pendott did not support this, 'cause it is their multimodal brand. And, um, we're just definitely concerned why they wouldn't have, given us the ability to complete two oh nine. Which basically is unsafe right now, as we're coming up with eighty at a high speed. Um, they're going to a two A road, and then they open up to a bi-lane road. So, um, we're trying to, um, come up with some answers, at least talking with Chuck Leonard and Mike. Carol, right? Carol, and then right to Pendott, um, as to just what happened here. And just to judge the magnitude, exhibit C is the total improvement. And it is really clever that they put us through this. Um, no wonder why Simon left town. Um, we just dug in and been, you know, like, um, determined, um, taking every casualty, not, not giving up. Uh, but what you see here is basically six point ten million dollars to complete the road improvements. Although we have a rat being, which will improve the middle loop road, okay? Um, and and that's still good, okay? I hope. Lot, lot of the people eyeing for those dollars, uh, right now, it's still in my coffers. Um, six point, so that leaves six point four million that needs to be funded to complete the road improvement. And and where you see the difference between the other one and this one is four forty-seven. It's important for you to understand that the Chelsea site, which is extremely valuable to us. According to Langen studies, cannot be developed until four forty-seven is complete too, which is another two, two and a half million. Um, so, um, it's just an astronomical assignment, um, in order to, uh, get this project developed.
Yeah, well, because what is four forty-seven had to do with Chelsea, not even the nature of it.
Well, according to Langen's counts, that without four forty-seven completed, Chelsea can't be developed. Now again, this is what Langen is saying, I think maybe we should really make a collective effort to go to Pendott and say, enough's enough. Okay, I mean, they had us, Pendott had us completely strapped. We can't get to our land, we can't get to our equity. We have lenders that are circling around us, like, you know, a western movie with a patchy. But so far, we're okay, but they're not gonna sit by forever. We have got it.
Another idea maybe to help answer your question, I think it probably has to do with the fact that the the loop road would be considered at that point in time. And that could drastically change the way traffic moves through that area, because instead of having to go all the way down two oh nine. For the traffic, to signalize intersection to four forty-seven, then kind of they'll have the opportunity to cut through. So the way traffic would move through that area would change drastically once those improvements are completed. And I think that's where the Chelsea site comes into play, what it can and cannot do.
Of course, I mean, right now, it's, I don't like the four thirty-seven, just line up all the way to the next light, you know, a new light, so makes sense.
The good news is that we are on the opening hour now. Now, some things go from worse to even worse. And you look at phase one, this next one, next picture. So, you know, I knew that it was going to be trouble. And we agreed to guarantee the multimodal loan. Um, we didn't have much choice, 'cause we had St. Luke's, who was basically saying, uh, Jim, are you gonna be able to do this? 'Cause we're not gonna stick around for long, you need to show us that you can build the road. So the Pendott multimodal, um, has a provision in it that we, and and it's, um, Chuck Leonard is actually, his organization is actually the contract holder. But he's a conduit and no guarantees, those guarantees passed to us. I know, I have a bad feeling about it, I sort of closed my eyes and said, I just hope that traffic in the night will hold on us. And we heard a lot of not so good things with Lee Ward. Um, but, um, so unfortunately, now phase one, okay, is one point six million dollars over, okay? And D P G is the guarantor of that money. Um, this my bottom. Now, we've been fortunate, 'cause we've been working with Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank. Who's, which is a bank that's owned by Pendott. Um, and they take, you know, real interest in providing the financing to bring this money here. Because frankly, other than Wawa, Pendott is not going to let any other of my paths get developed and open. Without that road being fixed. When you say it's a quad mire, when you say that it's a disaster. Trap in terms of the exposure, that's what we have. But they've been, they've been working it through, and there's correspondence about, there's a guy named William Hill. With, with a consultant with the, and Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank. And he's really working hard. Now, the real catch is, the one piece of equity that we have is the Chelsea property. And of course, without, and he knows it, without the ability to develop Chelsea, I don't know if they're going to approve that loan, okay?
Jim, can you just explain to the people here who Chuck Leonard is?
Chuck Leonard is the executive director of the Pocono Mountain Economic Development Authority. And he and his organization have been very helpful to us in organizing grants, uh, attempt, tax increment financing, and various other funding vehicles. But as far as this, uh, exposure, he somewhat said, Jim, fend for yourself, okay? So.
Jim, quick question, when you said Pendott won't be letting develop any more paths until the road is finished, do you mean the road all the way to four forty-seven, or do you mean the Gateway Drive?
What you see in the back.
Oh, the red, yeah, that makes sense, okay.
Which is one point six ninety.
John.
I've, I've bet.
Where, where, excuse me, sorry, Jim, where are we with the green line go?
They're still waiting for modules from Pendott, uh, we still don't have a delivery date, and we're currently gonna be giving the contractor another extension in time.
I was thinking November fifteenth, so that this was.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, um, so getting that, let me paramount, um, to it again. Um, Pendott sort of controls everything here with us. So getting that road finished is really more important than finishing two oh nine, but they're both very important, okay? And there's some communication with, uh, William Hill, the next couple pages. He was the one that actually said to us a couple weeks ago, by the way, Jim, did you realize that Smithville Gateway is not on the multimodal list? Like, how could that be? It wasn't, okay? And and Rosemary, and she has been tremendous, but she was done, um, she was done. Uh, I think there are a lot of politics involved, that's what I.
Jim, have you been able to have any conversations with the, the owners of the potential Sheeps property?
Um, now that doesn't change.
We've actually had a couple of conversations with Pendott. Um, we've not been able to talk directly with, with the developer, uh, chosen not to, uh, return, uh, calls that we had made early on. What Pendott had said was that once they completed their traffic impact study, because they did meet with Pendott and give them the guidelines for what they, Pendott was gonna be looking for in terms of traffic impact studies. Then as soon as that was submitted to Pendott, um, they would, uh, reach out to us and get us involved. Because they know what our plans are, and they know they wanna do something. And since we're literally right next door to each other, the two parties eventually are gonna have to talk to each other. But Pendott said, you know, don't push the outlook, wait until they at least tell us what they would like to do. And then we can start a conversation, uh, involving all three parties, ourselves, the developer of the other corner lot, Ian Pendott, in terms of who would be doing what. So, because that would provide, uh, we, we, we know what the overall improvements are expected for phase two, which is in the neighborhood of another three million. But, uh, with them, they're depending on the amount of traffic that they're gonna generate from their project, they would be subject to contribute a substantial amount of of that.
I'm not sure it addresses your current issue with the current traffic of two oh nine, but certainly not actually it is.
That is, that is correct, it doesn't, it doesn't address what we have right now, but by virtue of the fact that he didn't tell us to hit the road. And we get, I'm gonna say, weekly emails from them asking questions and asking for additional information in order to put some sort of package together. I, I, I personally see it as a positive sign, because they could have, after doing an initial review, saying, you know, we're sorry, but, uh, they haven't done that. And for the last four and a half months, they have been working with us very diligently, looking at this performance.
Can only ask this and not help with it, but did you apply the multimodal through D C U D?
Yes.
Okay.
So they have a, and then another program called P A Sites has a lot of money, and and we're getting with Michelle and Chuck right now to dive into that. That's another big, uh, event, I think it was Julie, who, um, actually let us know about that.
Mister Chairman, I don't think there's one application that we haven't, haven't submitted.
Yeah, we're, we're right there, we, we have. Um, and and there's an article here about Shaviro, and and the fact that Robert turning is public information that she's doing very well with him, okay? Um, they seem to have, um, done some good networking, so again, we got to, um. And I think the township really has to get into this because with us, 'cause this literally is a site that won't go anywhere until we get the roads a little more, really.
Sorry, I attempted to say that you probably don't develop.
Oh, you can ask me when they show up for this sketch plan review. Is that on the table?
Believe it will be.
Even that surprises me, I never heard.
Well, be there, be square.
So they'll be here this Thursday?
Hold on.
No, not sheets, that's like a nice, no, no.
Yeah, um, sheets, hold on. I thought they meant a threshold beyond.
Yes.
He shows a sketch, but a little while you're.
Yeah, sheets is scheduled for the planning commission meeting on October, October tenth.
Sure. So they're gonna be with the planning commission on October tenth.
Thank you.
Okay.
You said one point six is what you need for the, to fix the rest of two oh nine?
That is existing, the, the, the new?
No, I know, the existing, the red section here, at least before you can add any more paths and start generating more revenue, right?
And I bet, I wish about a million is over runs.
A million of that, yeah, because you've also got, you know, the inspector you have to pay and the extra traffic and following items like that, that just go along with that. Uh, and we had, uh, as, you know, with any prudent developer, we had a ten percent set aside, you know, once a contractor's awarded, your contingencies. Well, uh, right now, they're pushing thirty-five percent in terms of, in terms of the overruns.
And a one year's time in terms of the three.
Yeah, and three and go next year and turn in four, so, um. So the fact that even, even Pendott was a little surprised.
Your worst fear since millions, so many of that money, twenty, a hundred dollars. I mean, uh, I don't get to pick the contractor, I can't run the job, I'm just told, here they are, total ripoff. Anyway, this is our overall plan, and I'll just run through some of the things that we're working on. Um, you'll see next to St. Luke's, this has been going on forever, but. this has been going on forever, but we're very, very, very close to relocating Duncan apartments. It's the most intensive 2000 construction out of Duncan. But we're condo-ing it. Um, and, um, and then we're going to have 5,500 feet next door.
Are they both Duncan doors? No, both of those buildings are not.
It's a drive through.
Duncan.
Oh, that's a drive through.
Well, there's two buildings, no.
Right.
There's two. One, one, one is a drive through, one, the other one is not. The problem is that the other one is going to be small, uh, take our restaurants, you know, fast, very fast food. There's no major seating.
Are you going to propose to build both of those, building B and C at the same time?
No, no, because we've got to get going on Duncan.
Okay.
And the other one.
Typically, the, the bank will give you financing, uh, Mr. Chairman, until you've got at least 50% of the unit leased out, so they know what funds are going to be here to pay back.
So here for pads. We actually have some great interest, um, in very successful Mexican restaurant for the pad behind St. Luke's. But we have pretty well. Anyway, so we want to try to get Duncan on the, right here.
Is it submission ready?
We're going to do.
That, that, no, the only, the only ones that we were working on was from an engineering standpoint is, uh, revisions to the Phase 1, 1, playing development plan right there.
Right, that's what I mean, but you're, you're gonna be submitting that soon.
We're, we're working on that and would be submitting that soon as in addition to that and also the pop lights and presses.
And you're hoping that one, without 209?
Yes. That's, that, that was part of the deal.
This phase that you see here is Chuck Leonard brought us a rehab hospital um, from Texas. They're very interested.
Not drug rehab.
No, not drug rehab, no. Rehab.
We want to make that clear.
Physical medicine.
Physical rehab.
Oh, really?
Companies that very, if somebody's in a very serious accident, they.
Right, right, like what, the, uh, coordinated health.
Yeah, yeah, that is correct.
So, um, we did have high property for a hotel in Tubi. But because of the data center, which I will see the plane in a minute, we moved all that and hide to the great company. Their focus point down on 209, right down here, 305. Actually, the way, what you see there is our residential, 260 apartments, which could be that or it could be something else, we'll see in a minute. And also tomorrow, super my, small market time, you go in this 1B section up on the road. Which, so this is one potential of what we're looking to do. Okay, and then the other major residential site is what we call a 2A, which is up on the hill. It's been a lot of site work. That's this one. Trying to figure out how to make that, how to make that work. Across this is the next plan is Chelsea. And I think Jacob will be happy because, um, you know, the data center is taking a different turn where what those other guys added, they were charging about a million feet or that was going to occupy Chelsea across the street. Which they did not do their homework. Our consulting group has really dived into what really needs to be done. Why don't you just page on that, Doug, for a second?
Yeah, it, uh, we're trying to finalize the, the initial study for, uh, utility access uh, for the, for the project, which would define uh, how much power might be available to the data center. Cause I'm sure everybody's aware that they are, they are power hogs. And water usage is not that, not as bad as it was originally portrayed. And that's very reasonable with all within the, the will serve letter that we've already got from VCRA. So that would not be an issue. Uh, but the nice beauty of this particular site is that we have access to two power companies as opposed to just one. Meded is the, uh, the service provider for this area, as most of you know. But there also happens to be a high tension, uh, high capacity power line that runs through the site that's owned by PPL. So the study is analyzing both, working with both of those power companies as well as UGI, who also is right on site already to be able to provide backup power to the, uh, to the backup generators, uh, should they be needed in that. So once that becomes available, that will define whether the, uh, there is sufficient capacity to be able to support a data center. And then if that's the case, then they go through a much more detailed study of letting us know, uh, how and when they'll be able to provoke. Something that will be able to literally turn the switch and okay, there's the power. Really something that happened over a couple of years.
Building heights, or those other guys were talking, you know, 120, this is 63.
This would be within, it would be no, no, no order changes required for that at all. And they'll also be able to work around the existing design.
If they have, like, say the Loop Road, then it's.
That's, they will work within the confines of, of the site as it exists today.
Our, our partner in St. Luke's uh, and Wawa, our trust basically introduced us to this, uh, company who are consultants. Uh, they have mortgages consultant, they got direct ties to Amazon and other end users. Um, I'm anxious to get to making those contacts, but I've sort of been held back because, you know, they're saying, look, we need to understand what we have before we start partnering. But okay, I feel like this, but this is going to be a high density plant across the way. Apartments, residential townhouses, retail, okay? And that'll be a nice complex. Now, if the data center doesn't go, okay? We all hope it does, but economically, more economically sound and nothing more tax wise, more sound than the data center limited. And there's, there's basically what we're looking at, which is a lot different than what you saw before, okay? Three buildings, 600,000 feet. A lot different with, with a, uh,
Please, please understand that those footprints just show that a fat amount of square footage is possible on the site, but there's been no engineering.
I think you're figuring it out.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I can guarantee you that when we come in with a plan that has more engineering done on it, it will not look like that sheet of paper.
And we're charging 63, not, not a big monster building that what was talked about before. I know John, they're friends of yours.
I thought of data center, Chelsea. I mean, sort of thought of that, that is also on Chelsea. This is on the other side.
Basically, depending on the amount of power that might be available,
Yeah.
that, that might be an option depending on the type of interest that they get. But at this point in time, they're focusing on just on the, uh,
Well, they don't typically see those where they split the users between a road, right?
If they were to do that, they would have to, uh, provide a second substation on that side of the road. So that's why they're not, they're not excited about moving to that side. Because if you notice on that plane, it also shows that underneath the, uh, the high capacity power line that's there right now, uh, you'd have to construct, uh, depending on how much power we're going to be needing, you'd have to construct a new substation within the site in order to, what, to serve as data centers. But that plan also protects the, the commercial funds on 209 and 447. So these units would be interior to the site.
Just, uh, a really nicely small lease with a, a day, uh, senior daycare on 447, the greenest slade of property. And we're actually, uh, Nate, Nate, where is going to lay it out? We hope to be able to develop. If you know that property, you have the building behind it, you have a garage that'll come down there. We have land behind it. So we're going to look to try to do maybe 30, 40 apartments, you know, there, there to generate some dollars. Uh, and we think we maybe I would get that done to Pendott without, you know, any of this major impact.
Okay, this is on the 447?
447, yeah.
You know, the sleep center is there across there.
Yeah, true. Okay, that makes sense.
We're searching for little things to, to get done.
Yeah. You want anything to show the progress to the rest?
So, uh, but anyway, this is working. So we're a lot near this data thing right now. We're trying to cushion the weight field, the residential division. And there's a boom coming up to our, it's big, we're forming apartments. Uh, but right now we're going to see how far we can take this data. Because we're the township and for us, it's a home run and we can pull it off, okay?
You can, you're going to pursue both at the same time? That way, like where you can pursue both at the same time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That initial study is expected within the next three to four weeks. And then that will give us a much better picture as to whether the data center will be viable or not.
It may have been around when we, uh, had this site under contract. Um, a key component of that arrangement was that buyer coming up with a sizable sum of money, uh, to pay real estate taxes. Unfortunately, they dropped it in a not so favorable manner. Um, and for the last month or two, uh, my world has been like, um, we all, we're football season right now and nobody could do a fourth down and 30 like Tom Brady, okay? So I was somewhat like him, okay? Because on Friday we raised a quarter of a million dollars and made an agreement, okay, uh, to get the taxes paid. Uh, and the tax sale was money. So believe me, it was a close call. But we're real proud of what we were able to do ourselves. I had chipped in some of my retirement money. My partner did say, our trust did say, everyone recognized how important this project is. So, uh, but anyway, what you see there, we signed an agreement with the tax authority. That's their idea, but by, by, uh, the 20th of this month, it'll all be paid. Sorry, a little hairy, um, but we, we pulled through it. That's our, that's our update. Uh, one last thing is that you know that I bought this land with Boris Rubin. Uh, we've been working with, uh, your MUA, Phil. Russ Albert, Russ Albert. And, uh, he's bringing silver there. Okay, this is the plan. We're partners with it, a junior company. It'll be a medical building. And it'll be two, three stories, maybe some ground for retail. A couple of stories of a park. Great site.
And to be clear, Russ Albert obviously was already working on extending the sewerage up in that direction. So it's, this, this pro, this site was not the impetus for that. We just have to be able to, to tag along and, uh,
Now, the township committed from American Rescue Plan, I claim about $200,000 to ensure.
I just wanted to make clear that, that this project is not the reason why the sewer authorities going up in that direction. We're just, we're just tagging along to the ride.
Jim, we've been sitting across from each other for eight years talking about this. Just want to thank you, this is the most forthright conversation we've had on this. Thank you for sharing all this with us.
Jim, what it sounds like.
You're going to kill me before you're killing me.
If it sounds like you've got, you know, some possible leads on, on tenants and all this stuff, but you it sounds like this 1.6 million is sort of paramount.
And, and.
And the future road.
The balance of two of them. We can do these paths that are, that are good, but we can't do any of the larger deals.
Do you have any other outlooks for those funds?
How much have you put in for the DCED multimodal? I don't remember, uh, I mean, I have to imagine if you're looking for 1.6, the max ask is 3 million, so you probably 1.6 at least.
I, I don't remember what, you know, with the.
But I assume Chuck and Michelle were the applicants.
Some of that money can't be used to fix old problems. We have money, we have a billion dollars like that for 209 expansion. But we can't use it right now.
Right.
But again, we got to start.
Contracts already signed. You can't use new dollars to fix the old issues.
Uh, well, I can almost ask this lastly. Obviously, you don't want to spend extra money, but is there any way that it can be repainted? The lines, the current section that you're talking about? Cause you can't see it in the rain. It's dark and raining, you can't see any of the lines.
I, I think the best way to handle that is, uh, the, the current situation that we're in is to, um, you want to send me an email and then I will board on to traffic planning and design. And we'll say something to the contractor. As the contractor has committed that, uh, he will address safety issues.
All right, I love this.
So you do that, uh, you know, regardless of what's going on as far as, and at this point in time, I don't know that he's really owed any money. He just, he clearly was back on site. He wants to make sure that, you know, the, uh, you know, to quote the phrase out of an old, another movie, show me the money.
Does, would a letter from the board of supervisors be of any assistance in that?
Yes, and then when, when, uh, Jim mentioned about, you know, getting assistance from the township, we weren't asking for dollars for you, for you to kick in. It was items, items such as that.
Obviously, yeah, there's ways to help move the, especially finishing 209, which is, is problematic right now. We want to see that now.
We got to raise, okay, we really do. It's you, us and you in different conditions.
Cause when you think about it, if the worst case scenario happens and this, this project doesn't go any further, Pendott's going to be stuck with that road anyway. Correct. So it's help us now or it's all yours.
Right.
And I'll send you all. Maybe Spain.
Do you think at some point in the next month, we could have a meeting that after the next grant openings or deadlines, we figure out? If it's not from the state, I personally think helpful, but when it's, you know, any other source of funds, we can always meet in the minds of that. I mean, we worked on the, the realignment for Franklin Hill Road. You know, as a little Westfield common site.
Yeah.
Potentially this gap you drive.
Any, any help that could be offered to you? Welcome, ready to sit down and discuss those opportunities at any time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's gonna be okay.
Thank you for your time. In patience. Right, uh, next to the consideration, I'll write the advertisement draft order in the 73 revisions, nuisance ordinance. Robert Julian, we want to talk about that in the package.
It just makes a very, you know.
Man, I think it just deals specifically with certification if I'm not. Right, based on our research.
Um, certification, there have been a few changes to the, um, suggestions and table one and two has been added, uh, to add back if we. Suggestions and table one and two has been added, uh, to add back if we need to see when we're doing what we're doing.
Very small.
These have been the two changes that we talked about, but after a few months of looking at this, we thought, I think.
Yeah, for public, uh, information, this is a small change to the nuisance ordinance. Now that we have the devices and are reading them, I, Roberts realized probably should update some things. In the technical elements of this nuisance ordinance, so these. We're just going to. Set a date, right, for, for voting?
Um, so, uh, yes, and to authorize the advertisement, uh. Ron, please correct me if I'm wrong on this one, the business and law ordinance, which means that we need to have it advertised at least seven days beforehand. If it's not a zoning ordinance, we do not need to send it to either planning, uh, either planning commission or give that thirty day window for review. Um, so if we want to get this up and moving, so we can take action, we will be able to pass this on the members from the meeting. Uh, understanding that Ron and I will craft the advertisement tomorrow morning and get it sent to the open record by tomorrow afternoon.
Well, I love Julie to death, but whether tomorrow morning happens or not, I'm not sure, but we will get it to the open record all time.
We'll make it happen.
We lost our chairman.
Okay, well, we have to just rip the motion and approve, but I think we should, I think you ran the bathroom that way.
And well. But I hear a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll motion to authorize the. Right, hold on, let me make sure I get it right. Motion to authorize advertisement of draft orders, number two fifty three, revision to nuisance ordinance.
I'll second it.
There you go. I just motioned to approve, yeah. Operas advertisement, Robert seconded.
Question, Mr. We have a second one, Mr. Lavenheim, any questions, discussion?
Hi, Brad.
It's a quick note for your reference of one million square foot data center requires one to three million gallons of water every day.
Appreciate the, uh, data. Definitely that will be something, I'm sure it's in the study, uh, gonna stick to this real quick. Hey, anything else on two fifty three? All in favor? Next item is the consideration to select a date for a joint session with the planning commission regarding signage revisions, which. Michael previously reported on, is nearly complete. Um, no matter what days we choose, we have to go to advertise it, or we have to advertise it because. Uh, we would have required both bodies and thus far there are none that are open, no days left open for that. So I'm thinking, we obviously want the whole board of supervisors to be there. I don't know what dates you all wanna look at and if they're in October or if they're in November.
Whatever.
I'd rather start.
I think Ron is, I think Ron needs to be there, cause there's a bunch of nuances around. Legality of limiting signage.
Yeah.
So I think Ron has to be there to come with your. The signage hat on. But we have, uh, Julie, do we have an already like standing joint session meeting? When's the normally held?
The last, the last Thursday of the month, so we're tentative, we're looking at Thursday, September twenty sixth at seven P M. Uh, this will go before the planning commission, but given their availability of admitting on Thursday.
I'm sorry, it's running twenty sixth?
Give them the option of October twenty fourth as well. Just also.
The Thursday.
Yeah. Uh, can't do twenty fourth, okay, all right, well, let's, I just wanna give them two days for them to wanna end up where we. Yeah, that's, that's offer nine twenty six and ten seventeen.
Which ten seventeen, why are we in two?
Also, Thursday, Thursday, uh, Thursday of October.
I don't know, so there.
Oh, seventeen, you said seventeen.
Seventeen. Seventeen.
It's all good. It's all good, well, don't worry, we'll add this to the bottom of the next, uh, agenda too.
All right. Will, do we need any more?
I'm just gonna say, oh, that we authorize the advertisements in accordance with whichever mutual dates. We brief on, are you a second? You both seconded, so I'm putting both them, questions, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Anyone? I think, uh. Julia, just for public standpoint, cause I know this one isn't up, right? This is on the website, yeah, yeah, cause it's been completely wrapped once, I think, um.
Alex and I spoke today, um, we need to put it in order before we do it up. It should be to on the website and you can both planning commission, uh, it can be both, to both the planning mission and yourselves. Um, no later than September sixteenth.
Perfect. Again, remember it's still in. Drive mode, it's like question marks on legality and stuff, or. Want to review, so.
That'll bring us to public comment. Hold on, let's do it.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I have a question about park use. Um, and I was told that this might be a, a good place to ask. Um, we are, I teach fit play classes, we're a mommy and me, uh, mommy and me fitness group. We meet at waterfront park, um, and I noticed that there's a house there. We're going to be looking for an indoor location going into the winter. Um, and I, um, I'm working with Alex Jackson to reserve the field. Um, and he mentioned that this might be a good place to ask about the use of the house. I think right now it's, um, just one group, a boys scout group that uses it. Um, but if opening it up to other groups was an option.
Well, okay, so is this like a business or is it a nonprofit?
It's a business.
Okay, so we have to figure out for the sake of our free schedule, what it would be with regard to commercial use. Um, but it's something that would probably take us a, a couple of weeks to look at.
Okay.
Um, but it sounds like you sent Alex like a narrative or something to that.
Yeah, so we are using, um, the, we were using the soccer fields, uh, now we're using the basketball court.
Yeah.
Um, this month, uh, so we've been, we've been at waterfront park for a few months now. Um, and I just asked him about using the house, like noticing that it's there. Um, if anyone used it and what the, what the deal with it was.
Sure.
So, yeah, so he's familiar with our group, um, and I have a flyer with me if you wanted to put that in the file. Or, okay.
May I, may I have your name, please?
Nadia.
Um, last name, Colon, C O L O N, thank you. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
And so we'll take a look at that.
I think we also have to probably have the engineer revisit, maybe. I know there's certain stipulations on the number of people on the building.
Okay.
Uh, because there's some structural safety issues.
Okay.
Um, which is why the building hasn't been used as much as would be nice to. So certain areas that are limited and all that stuff, so just to make sure that. Um, what is possible will also meet what you're looking for.
Okay. Yeah, well, we would, let's, uh. Um, if it's an option, we definitely want to explore it, we like the location. Um, and I hope to be able to offer these classes into the, into the winter. Um, it's been nice being able to be at a field and. Um, be outside in the summer, but going into the winter, I'm gonna look for some more different space, hopefully affordable, small business, yeah.
Sure.
And I'd like to, I like to be able to keep my membership rates low to make it a, a, you know, go to workout plan for moms.
Right, what is the average class like in terms of the number of people?
Um, right now, so I have about four to five members who attend, um, pretty regularly. Everyone's not at every class, so we're usually, like today, it was me and one other mom. Um, so we're a pretty small group.
Sure, I think the building's rated for eleven.
Okay.
Well, take that, and I know there's some other municipalities that have food structure or something like this. I think, I think it was like the yoga and stuff, so we'll take a look at that, but I don't see why we wouldn't be able to figure out some. Because the other thing is. Can't have the dates conflicted and whatnot, but literally they wouldn't be enough, uh. Structural, uh, support, so for one, one group at a time, so definitely look forward to it. I think you gave us your email and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, yeah, the website is there, actually, um, I don't think that my email is on the flyer, I can write that down. Um.
Yeah, that'd be fine, or if you gave it to Alex, we can just.
Awesome, all right, thank you so much.
Thanks for bringing those all, yeah, meeting, those two, they were really well behaved.
Thank you.
I'll be a municipal edition. All right, on public comments.
Oh, yeah, one question about, well, about the gateway, can we get into this for one minute?
Sure.
Maybe two? So, again, late to the game, I don't know how this stuff works, but. They, they got approved to develop what was Mojer's Knob, right, and.
Mojer's Dairy.
Or Mojer's Dairy. Um. So they're looking for grants to fix the road that their private enterprise has screwed up. Is that, I might get that, right?
I don't think that's necessarily fair, I think it's.
Very, very common for developers to see various funding streams to.
Right, sure.
To fund public improvements.
Right.
Um.
Reason they even qualify for those grants is because it's for public safety improvements, it's not necessarily just the capacity. This is what should really be done already, even without this development, which is why it's funded. And if they left town, it would be done.
That's what he just said, so he said in the worst case scenario.
Right.
They go bankrupt, this project goes bankrupt, and Pendot has the bond, and they will fix it, it will get fixed.
But how did it get this far without him having plans and money to. Complete the job.
What he just said, it's they have, uh, he just said they had a. Budget by the contractor or with the contractor and they budgeted an extra ten percent.
Right.
And it now said, said it about over thirty five percent, so it's like twenty five percent, which is a million dollars.
Right.
Tax, tax increment financing and whatnot, um, was great, uh, depending on the application, but. One of the things with like these internal roads and especially the, you know, two oh nine improvements are that. No matter what you build in as far as the contingencies. The explosion of interest rates and whatnot, just post COVID, which are all now starting to come down.
Uh huh.
It was a six million dollar TIF and they spent. What did they say on here, like, I don't wanna say. Yeah.
What's a TIF?
Tax increment financing.
Okay.
That is, in essence, depending on the, the years and I'm not, I won't go too deep, cause it depends on literally. A unique circumstance with each, each type of, of project. Idea with the TIF is that, but for the TIF, the project of. And basically, in our case, it's twenty years and it alternates the first twenty years. Uh, the first ten years of the existence of the TIF. About twenty eight percent of the funding, uh, that's in the increased assessment goes towards. The municipality, the school district, the county, the other seventy something percent goes towards the payment of the bonds. That finances the road improvements.
Uh huh.
And then in the second ten years, that number flips, the ratio flips, and then seventy eight percent of it goes toward the. Due entity with the taxes, and then the balance goes toward the satisfaction of that debt.
Right.
But that's only one aspect of the project.
Right.
So the rest is that RACP, which is the Development Assistance Capital Program, that's through the state, L S A, local share capital of the state. That's gambling funds. Um, and multimodal fund, there's both a Pendot one and a D C D one. Restrictions are fairly similar, but they're awarded differently.
Which one will they decline on?
Which is generally somewhat more competitive and the legislature has a little bit less influence on than say. The D C D one and D C D Department of Community and Economic Development is more responsive to those, I don't wanna say political trends, but. Um, the bureaucracy is, is curtailed a little bit by the legislature there. And direct recommendations of legislators, in that case, tends to carry a little bit more weight with anything that goes specifically to the C F A. How a financing party ultimately approves L S A grants, D C D, multimodal, that type of thing.
You also have to realize that this has been going for about, I think, almost ten years. And we don't realize how much the world has changed. When it started, it was gonna be a shopping center, it was gonna be a, uh, a movie theater.
Senior housing?
That's still there. The thing, the senior housing can't happen until the road is finished all the way to point seven.
The biggest issue, it's not that these other uses like apartments or retail are, are, are dead, like, like some will say, it, it's really more like. They can't access the equity they have for these specific sites, like they have more than a million dollars allocated for site preparation. That's like two B and two A, but until they finish, you know, substantially one A one, one A two. And then the roads beyond it, they're not gonna be able to.
Cause they don't get the, that H O P we talked about.
Right, so they're basically, what they're saying is they are indebted because of the road overruns. And therefore, they're not able to leverage the rest of their capital because they're paying that debt service rather than building with it. That's.
And then the Chelsea, and Chelsea, the Chelsea property, I'm guessing it's Chelsea Property Group, is that the owner of the Chelsea?
No, no, Chelsea property is, is, is owned entirely by Timmy Petrus and his, uh, various subsidiaries. It is, it was bought at the same time, but more or less has the, the rest of the site. And it's, I think, somewhere around thirty acres, cause on that side, there's a hundred acres that are on.
So.
The main side with the farm.
Chelsea?
What's that?
Jim is Chelsea?
No, Chelsea, it's, it was referred to that cause someone named Chelsea on it, I don't remember.
Property Group, who is the.
I, I suppose, but, but, but Jim owns that, that is considered part of the gateway, not on the land development sake. For the, the main, major mixed use development plan, but what's across the way, which is where the. Papa is that there's a land development plans for, and then everything else behind that, behind the hot lot and that other internal loop road over there.
Right.
With the other water lines and whatnot, that's the Chelsea.
That's the Chelsea property, yeah, yeah, so Jim fought that from Chelsea. Okay, yeah, that was Chelsea property.
Yeah.
They've all had. But that's what, that's what they refer. But the other thing that I wanna say procedurally, you, you asked, how did it get this far? Uh, there's very, very strong case law that basically says you can't reject something on the basis of not having outside approvals. That doesn't mean they're gonna be able to record the plan until they get those approval, but it, it means that at that point, they can start. So it's like the same thing of like. When municipalities don't impose a time clock on things as they occasionally don't. We are very strenuous about that, you know, and then you see gives you five years, right? And then your building permits are also five years, but if you fall outside that, you're not gonna get it, but it's different when it's phased development. And so in, in, in this instance, um, the hope is with the completion of these roads. It's gonna facilitate the rest of those improvements, and that's why they're all bonded, like the stormwater, uh, five to six foot main. The other improvements are public, the extension of the sewer and water to Smithfield Sewer Authority and the V C R A, the. Broad and Great Regional Authority, all of those things are, are part of those outside approvals.
Uh huh.
So.
I don't know anybody's done any construction, I'm sure a lot of us have in the last five years, but continuously a ten percent. It's more like fifty percent these days.
Well, statute says otherwise, unfortunately.
What?
Statute, state law says it can be ten percent.
Yeah, but just for our own protection, if somebody comes to us with a, hey, we've got ten percent.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna appreciate that, but also a lot of people that say they're doing contract work in Pennsylvania, consider themselves a licensed contractor, which. That really doesn't exist, depending on what field you're in, so.
Right.
It's eerie anyway, but it. It's substantially different when it comes to public improvements, and most grants, uh, five percent is like engineering, and ten percent's administrative, and ten percent. Will be your contingency. Square six, you're on, sir.
What's happening with the, uh, Shawnee Valley, uh, P R D?
Sir, may I have your name, please?
Alright.
May I have your name?
Art Grohl.
Thank you.
I, I mean, John, if you want to sum up what you said earlier, just for the show and sake.
The developer intends to build off the two thousand and five approved plan. Uh, he had some conditions that had to be satisfied from an engineering standpoint, he satisfied those conditions. Uh, and now he's in the process of entering into a developer's agreement. Uh, posting extra money to secure the improvements that he has to make, and, uh. That, that's where it stands, I would suppose, I don't think he intends to build before next spring, but it could be sooner, but I don't think so.
Well, what are you gonna do with Hollow Road, that is a stagecoach road, they have, Pendot does not have. Any, uh, right away on either side of the road, they've already taken, it's a sixteen foot road, they made it into a twenty four foot road. They took my steps down to the house next door and everything else, Smithfield Township that Doug did this, I had a, uh, uh. Thing against Pendot that I already won, the one, uh, for my steps that they tore out. I mean, how much traffic do you think that road's gonna take? You've already approved Shawnee Mountain, everything else, now you're gonna approve how much more? How much traffic can that road take? That's what I want to know.
To make this clear, we didn't approve this, it was approved in two thousand five, nobody here was, was here in two thousand five. The second thing is, the traffic on Hollow Road is now twenty three hundred vehicles a day, I don't know. What the projection is, because the developer has had a, uh, traffic study done, but it's, it's been going on so long, quite honestly, I can't even remember. But it's, I think it's available on the website, isn't it, with the development plan?
It's on the website, I saw. I understand, that's not my question, my question is, what are you gonna do with that traffic on Hollow Road? That is a, a Pendot road, Smithfield Township's taking care of it, uh.
We.
We take care of it, we take care of it, but we can't do anything about it, I'll tell you, I've been through meetings, for instance, about the curb. At the end of the road that you go down towards Shawnee Playhouse, I've sat with Pendot representatives, and it's like, oh yeah, well, it's bad. We'll put up some signs, which they did, but they won't do anything else, and that's an area where is accident after accident after accident. And we, we pleaded with it, but you heard how Pendot, um, responds with this other problem with, uh, Smithfield Gateway. When we go to them, it's pretty much the same kind of thing, and it's, we, we can't do anything to the road, because it's a state road, and they've got to do it.
To, to be clear, we have a winter maintenance agreement, but otherwise, it's maintained by the state.
Right. Don't be about, I know what happened. Look at, look at all the, uh, pothole on the side, because it's, it's shawling apart.
And stay in your own.
They don't do anything.
Robert, to Robert's point, can I ask, is there a link on the township website, if we see. State road issues that we could communicate with Pendot, to make it easy to find, is there a way to do that?
The easiest thing to do is to search, uh, Pendot. And it comes up with their customer care center, and you can report it directly there, okay.
That can report, it's staged too, and it's kind of hold, obviously the same one, but it probably holds a little bit more weight, maybe, maybe not.
I think I tried to emphasize that, like, on two and I, there was some overhanding stuff from, from the campaign, they've taken care of it because of it.
Is there an eight hundred number?
I don't know, I don't know, and that's an eight hundred number, but.
They're used to it.
And that, uh, it's a code.
Like an eight hundred fix road, or, right, or a pothole or something.
But if you do want to know what roads we do on, there's an extensive map and listing on our, uh, public works page.
Christine, five seven zero, four two four, three zero two four, and that is for the Pendot, uh, District five dash four, which is located on Ninth Street. Right, up by Staples.
Right.
Um, but you can also use the customer care board for you, two, five seven zero, four two four, three zero two four.
Two four.
Um, or you can use the Pendot customer care center, or call online, great, thank you.
And there is, um, one eight hundred fix road, that is what it is.
I would just call the five seven four number, though, honestly, you'll get someone more directly. And that's been really good about, you know, answering those, uh, requests on our behalf, that they definitely. Save yourself the extra stuff.
I called, I called.
I'm in emotional, have a turn. My, my second mystery out there, all in favor?
Alright, hi.
Alright, your turn, it's ten thirty five, thank you, everybody.